Let's bring this meeting to order. This is a meeting of the city council at Council Chambers, 10 West State Street. Today's date is May 29, 2018, over the noon hour. Yesterday was Memorial Day, which explains the odd time and date. Notice to the public, please limit your remarks to three minutes and don't direct them at any one of us in particular. And it's up to the council and the staff whether to answer questions or not. We've been called to order. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the liberty and justice of God.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Cahill?
Here.
Gowdy?
Here.
Hoop?
Here.
Isom?
Lamer?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Warren?
Down to item E. Time for council administrator comments. I'd like to comment on the fact that over the weekend, or this last weekend, there was an open house at the amphitheater at the Grimes Farm. It was well attended. Anita O'Gara from the Iowa Natural Heritage Foundation was there. Wonderful event, and it's a really pretty venue. And it's one of three venues, actually four, that have music lined up this summer. So for the under-40 population that would like to have the quality of life, things like the music at Iowa Brewing, or at the Orpheum Theater, and now at the Amphitheater as well. Oh, and Busby Meadery, actually, yesterday had an event that was well attended. There are things to listen to if you're a music fan, and that's kind of fun to have around Marshawn. Are there any comments from the city councilors or from our administrator?
Your honor?
Yes.
I have one. I would like to add at the end of our discussion, as a discussion item, when we get down there, I'd like to add a little discussion on mosquito spraying. And I'd like to add a discussion on the, I am really upset with the outside landscaping at the library. It looks terrible. I mean, it's terrible. I got pasture grass for my cows that look better than this library, and that's terrible. So I want to have a discussion on that. Please.
We didn't provide 24 hours' notice, so we need to move it to the next one.
Yeah. Well, we'll have to move it to the next one.
If they're just discussion items, they don't have to have a notice, do they?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
For whatever's worth, we did get an email back from the assistant director at the library. The librarian had been on vacation out east, and they do have people working on the week Any other comments from the councilors?
Let me tell you why I had that comment. We had a group of consultants come in, and they looked at downtown Marshalltown and wrote us a really, really nice report that said if we could build the library where we build it, and we could use that as a footprint to work our way uptown, well, let's get it right before we start going uptown. And it isn't the footprint that these people put in that report. And I hate to see us take a report, accept it, pay a lot of money for it, and throw it on the shelf. Let's do what they said to do, and we've got the one alleyway now for pedestrians, a walkway uptown, and we can expand on that to make our downtown even better.
Again, this isn't a discussion item that we published, so we have to be careful how much we talk about it.
Yes.
My suggestion was that the library board consider hiring Patrick Mason, the same person that did the landscaping around Emerson, and engage him, do a fundraiser if they need to. This is an item that caused more complaints than anything else since I've been on the council in the last six years. So we know there is a problem out there, and there's got to be a solution to it, too. Let's move on to years of service recognitions, if we could. Have you flipped a coin, chief, as about who goes first?
Dave Ryerson, Marshawn Fire Department. So it is my pleasure today to present to Lieutenant Nick Anis his 10-year service award. And Nick was the first person that I spoke to in the fire department prior to my coming here to be the chief. And I can always count on an honest opinion from him. And as our union president, he has been very agreeable to sitting down with me and discussing matters. And we've had a very good working relationship in my time here, and I see no reason why that should change in the future. Nick, congratulations.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Mike Tupper, Marshawn Police Department. It's my honor and pleasure to have Lieutenant Tricia Tyne here today to celebrate her 15-year work anniversary. So I've had the honor of working with Lieutenant Tyne for about seven years, and here's what I know about her. She's very passionate about her job. She's very passionate about helping people. You've heard me talk about passion and compassion. She serves compassionately every day. Very, very bright, very intelligent, one of the best leaders I've ever worked with. I've had the honor of promoting her twice now. She's rose through the ranks very quickly in this police department. And what I've discussed with her for her long-term goals is there's no doubt she could be a captain here. There's also no doubt in my mind that she could be a police chief, whether it's here or somewhere else. She's very talented, an exceptional public safety professional. So we're very fortunate to have Lieutenant Tyne serving here in the Marshawn community. And I want to congratulate you on 15 years.
Thank you. It's been an honor and privilege to serve the city of Marshawn Town. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I'm remiss in my opening remarks that I didn't do a shout-out to Chief Tupper for the award that he got last week. As the top, oh, I forgot the title of it. Executive, Police Officer Executive in the State of Iowa. You do a marvelous job of outreach in this community, and I appreciate what your staff and you do to make sure that everybody knows you're here to help. Thank you.
At this point, let's go to item F, and I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move.
Is there a second?
Second.
If I moved a second, call roll, please.
Gowdy?
Just a minute.
Yes, sir.
Item number four. Will, I know we got this started before the new 911 system was put in place and the new board was put in place. Will any of these costs be picked up by them in the future? Are we going to cover the entire cost?
Rather than try to address that, let's just pull it off the consent agenda. I think it's going to take a wider discussion than maybe others that have information would
need to be here for it.
Okay. But like the tower, they're the major user of the tower, too, but we're paying for all of it.
This would just go right after the consent agenda on motions where we could talk about it more?
Okay.
So that would be pulling four through eight, or just four?
Whatever you guys think.
It all relates to the building, so let's pull four through eight.
You okay with that amendment?
Yes.
And is the second okay with that amendment?
Yes.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Thank you. That has carried. Would you please read the consent agenda items?
Sure. Approved council minutes, May 14. Approved bill list in the amount of $7,261,698.62. Approved the April financial statements.
Thank you.
Resolution approving a contract for roadway maintenance services at the Iowa Highway 14 from Iowa Avenue to Woodland Street with the IDOT pursuant to Chapter 28E of the Iowa Code. And resolution approving a contract for roadway maintenance services at the Iowa Veterans Home created pursuant to Chapter 28E of the Iowa Code. Resolution approving contract change order number one for the 2017 Center Street Bridge Overland Creek project, an increase of $38,207.67. Resolution approving engineer statement of completion and accepting the Center Street Bridge Overland Creek with the final project cost in the amount of $250,647.87. Resolution declaring certain property surplus and authorizing sale and disposal, a 2001 Chetel Master enclosed trailer. Approve alcohol license renewals, JV Bar, Walgreens, Hy-Vee Gas, Marshall Beer Wine Spirits, Marshall Tobacco and Vape, Midnight Ballroom, Impala Ballroom, Miranchito Mexican Grill and Seafood, and El Portal.
Is there a motion to approve all of those items?
All of those were just approved. It's just items four through eight.
Okay. All right. Let's go to item number four, then.
Items four through eight are all items related to equipping the communications center that will be built in the new police and fire building. This is included as part of our budget. I'm going to pull this up on the screen. I can't get them quite all on here. But as you can see, there are quite a few different resolutions of varying amounts of spending. This is all part of our $17.5 million budget. And so at this point, we have, as a council, or as a city, have not made a request for anything to be funded. I think the 911 Joint Services Board, which Teresa can speak to a little bit more, has considered or would be considering some financial contribution to part of this. But I would ask Teresa to elaborate more on what that would be.
I'm Teresa Lang. I'm the Communications Manager for the Marshall County 911 Center. The items that are on your consent agenda were items budgeted for two building projects ago, and they haven't changed. They're for radio equipment, towers, antennas, that do indeed dispatch for the whole county. The 911 Board is paying for other equipment that actually go on the consoles that we dispatch for, the computer equipment, the monitors, the servers in the back rooms, and some of that.
Okay.
I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Can we go one more? One more question?
Yeah.
Now that we have the new 911 Board set up and in operation, are you going to be covering the utility costs and stuff in the new building? Are we going to, is that a donation from the city?
That's still under discussion with the new Marshall County Communications Commission and the 911 Board.
Okay.
So that's still an item that they're working on. They've worked on an agreement for the existing building, which...
Yeah, that agreement just addresses use of space. But as far as utilities, the current utility costs are like telephone costs for communications operating out of the basement of the police department. Those are billed to the 911 surcharge funds at this point. And so it would not be contemplated that the city would be taking on those costs, that those would again be segregated costs.
Correct. This is just for the new building.
Okay.
The continuing costs of providing 911 service will still be paid for by the 911 surcharge.
Okay.
And that is our telephone bills every month, our maintenance bills, our contracts with different software companies, the ongoing access fees for the radio system. These are simply part of the new build.
Okay. That answers my question. I really appreciate it. Just, I want to make sure I'm on the same page that everybody else is. And with that, your honor, I would move that we approved Resolution four through eight as listed.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Any public comment? Roll call, please.
Hoop?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
That has carried. On to item number nine.
Nope. To the motion.
Oh, 15, sorry. Maybe I should print these out and bring them with me.
Approving a new liquor license for the Marshall Town Art Festival, July 21. And along with that would be introducing resolution allowing open containers on public ways for the Marshall Town Art Festival.
Is there a motion to approve the license renewals and the liquor license for the art festival?
So I'll move, your honor.
I'll second.
Can those be voted on separately, or... If you'd like, we could.
I would.
Okay. Let's, is there a motion to approve just item number 14 about approving the alcohol license renewals?
The motion to do the new liquor license.
What? I'm looking at a different one. Okay. Oh, we did. Yep, sorry about that. All right. G1, approving new liquor licenses for the festival. Is there a motion to approve that?
So I'll move, your honor. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Okay, that has carried. Let's go to item H1.
Resolution allowing open containers on public ways for the Marshall Town Art Festival.
Is there a motion to approve?
I move.
Is there a second? If there is not a second, then that item will not be approved.
There is somebody here from the art festival. Could they present on that?
I would love to have a presentation on that.
Amber Danielson, 803 West Main. I am the Director of the Marshall County Arts and Culture Alliance, as well as one of the co-chairs for the art festival. We've been holding an art fair since 1955, and in 2009, the Arts and Culture Alliance took over the responsibilities as being the sponsor organization. The annual art festival, previously known as the Link Creek Art Festival, now rebranded as the Marshall Town Art Festival, features over 60 juried artists, performing artists, live music, art activities, food vendors, and a one-of-a-kind raffle prize. The best thing about the festival is that it's completely free and family-friendly. No admission, no parking, two stages playing live music all day, free youth activities, and so much more. In addition to rebranding the festival in 2018, we'll be changing locations and moving down to the heart of our community in downtown Marshalltown around the courthouse. In an effort to support our growing community, the committee, along with the Arts and Culture Alliance, felt a strong need to brand the community of Marshalltown alongside one of its most popular events. In conjunction with vision Marshalltown, we believe the art festival conveys a sense of community pride. To continue the movement of labeling Marshalltown as "the place to live, work, and play," we wanted to be sure that attendees who are traveling to our community leave knowing where they came and have a reason to come back. It's the planning committee's primary goal, moving forward to host a high-quality art festival in Iowa and showcase the many wonderful offerings of Marshalltown. A vibrant arts and culture environment is critical to economic development. It is key to enhancing quality of life and nurtures a positive view of the community among residents and visitors. Our mission is to connect our communities with arts and culture by supporting, promoting, and enriching existing opportunities, as well as seeking new possibilities. And we believe a community enriched in arts and culture will attract, retain, and engage our residents. With an approximate attendance, we can confidently figure the economic impact of the art festival. In 2017, we had over 3,500 attendees, and a study done by the American for the Arts says individuals spend $31.47 per person, per event, outside of the cost of the festival, so gas or getting lunch. The economic impact of the 2017 festival was over $124,000 to the city of Marshalltown. In addition to telling you about the newly rebranded festival, I am obviously here to discuss with you our plan to sell alcohol at the festival. For the first time, the festival would like to sell Iowa craft beers and Iowa native wines. In past years, we have had a craft beer and wine area where we invited festival goers to sample. However, this year, we would like, for the first time, to sell them. We would like to extend this feature of the festival, and in your packets included a layout of the festival map, which I'm happy to put up on the screen if you would like me to. Otherwise, I will continue that on Saturday, July 21, from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., the Marshall Town Art Festival will be taking place in downtown Marshalltown, stretching from Center Street to Second Ave along Main Street, and will be held on the north side of the courthouse grounds. On the northeast side of the courthouse, there will be an enclosed tent where attendees of the age 21 and older would be allowed to purchase Iowa craft and Iowa native wines, Iowa craft beers and Iowa native wines, and then stroll the festival within the limits of our designated area without being limited to a fenced-in space. All individuals will be ID'd, and those 21 and older will be given a bright-colored wristband. And only those with a wristband will be allowed to go in the enclosed tent. Excuse me. With a wristband, then, inside those individuals will have the opportunity to purchase a beverage ticket that will be marked 21 and older, and be invited to purchase craft beer in cans from Confluence and Firetrucker, both Iowa breweries, as well as Iowa native wine from Somerset Winery. Festival volunteers who will be involved in this process, from IDing to selling, will go through training to assist in the safety of this process. They will be educated on handling the sales of alcohol and identifying and dealing with individuals who choose not to follow the rules. In addition, festival co-chairs have had several meetings with Chief Tupper and Jessica Kinzer and other city employees to coordinate the process to ensure the highest safety and success of this. The festival will be paying for four onsite officers who will be scattered among the festival for the entire day, and the festival committee will be taking great measures to ensure significant signage throughout the festival to communicate with festival attendees the rules and limits to which alcohol is permitted. The festival has a very strict ending time of 5:00 p.m. where alcohol sales will be stopped immediately. And we strongly believe that this extended feature will help continue our goal of providing a high-quality arts event in our community to attract, retain, and engage our residents in Marshalltown, and continue to the movement of labeling Marshalltown as "the place to live, work, and play." Any further questions?
Any questions?
Your honor, could we see the map? She said she had one. I would like to see that, please.
I think I can pull it up in the memo that I... Okay.
58.
Wait, can I use this, Jessica? Is that...
Yeah, they have to switch back theirs, otherwise it won't be visible.
It's 58. Page 58 in today's handout.
You're the only one to get the handout.
But it's the same page on the website.
Not when you're doing it with HTML.
This map is showing us extending to First Street, and we have condensed down to just Center Street to Second Ave, so we're not going from Center to First Street any longer.
Is there an extension north or south except on First Avenue? Is that the only spot?
Yep. And First Avenue will just be to the north side of the courthouse, so we won't extend all the way down First Ave. That is the only street.
It looked like you had food vendors on...
Correct.
...First Ave, south of Main Street.
Yes, correct.
Okay.
Question here.
Yes.
How many private businesses sell alcohol within that span of three blocks?
I don't know the exact number, but I can say that we are actively talking to the businesses on Main Street who will be affected by the festival, and having open conversations with them about our plan for alcohol. We specifically chose the breweries that we did because they have very identifiable cans, and so it will be really easy to know because we have no domestic. So, I mean, none of these, none of our downtown businesses sell the beers that we have chosen. So it will be really easy for our volunteers and police officers to identify if there's any outside alcohol brought in to these limits.
Chief, could I ask the chief a question? If we allow open cans in that area, if somebody brings in their own can, can we stop them? Because we've already said it's an area that you can have an open can in.
Yeah, I'm not sure that I could. I think it might be difficult for us to, not to be argumentative. I want to make it very clear, I support their plan.
Yeah.
I support what they're doing. I have met with the group once, and I know you've met with Captain Jones at least one other time. So we're supportive. We think it'll work, but I'm not sure it'll be that easy, but...
If somebody would go into one of those establishments and buy one and bring it outside, there really isn't anything we can do about it, right?
Probably not, but I'm not really concerned that that's going to be a huge problem.
Yeah, I don't know. I just wanted the question answered.
Yeah.
I would say just to kind of elaborate on how this complies with the previous action to approve their liquor license. So for their liquor license, they have to specify a service area, which is the map that we're talking about right now. And so for somebody else to bring in unauthorized alcohol that they are not selling into their service area is a violation that would need to be stopped. So, because that would be a violation of their liquor license. So that's where if the police department can't assist in that right of way, they certainly would have an obligation to stop alcohol that they are not selling from coming into an area that they've identified as their service area. If that makes sense.
That makes sense.
So basically, they can't have alcohol that they're not selling in a place that they've said this is where we're selling alcohol.
They wouldn't have it.
No.
If I walked into that corner, into the corner up here, grocery store, I could buy a can of beer there and walk outside, and if we say this area is okay to have an open can, what are you going to do to them? You can't do anything to them. They can have an open can there. We said they could.
But I think what the difference is, is about the city versus the Marshall Town Art Festival, which is they have multiple volunteers who will be walking around, that it's their obligation to say, "Sorry, this is our service area. You cannot have that alcohol here because we did not sell it."
Neil, did you want to replay the...
Thank you. Neil DeLall, I live at 1504 Brentonwood Terrace. I spent eight years in the beer business, so I've worked a time or two at beer events. But say if somebody were to go into one of these stores and buy a can of Coors Light, and we don't sell Coors Light, we will automatically know that that doesn't belong there. So we will train our staff, our volunteers, to immediately spot a can like that, Coors Light, Bud Light, Budweiser, Corona, and then have them, remove them off the premises, throw it away. They can leave. Or we can also have the Marshawn Police do that same thing, too.
He said he can't. If we have, if that's an open can area, he can't.
That's a violation of our license, so if Iowa alcohol wanted to come in and revoke it.
I think we're getting off into two different discussions. So they can certainly ask somebody to leave their area.
Yep.
Okay? If they're bringing in alcohol that they haven't sold, they can do that. But we are essentially saying it's okay to drink beer in this area, and I'm not going to get into the logistical argument. I'm not concerned. I think that this event is going to work. I'm not concerned at all. I don't have any concerns.
Okay.
I would also point out that the resolution, granting the exception, grants it to the Marshall Town Art Festival, doesn't just say that this is an area where from these hours to these hours, anybody in the public can be drinking whatever they want to in this area. And so it's very much tied in, the language of the resolution is very much tied into the specific event at hand.
And then so somebody that not having a wristband or those cans would be asked to leave.
Under those circumstances, I would move to approve that resolution again, and we'll try it this one time and see if it works. If it worked, great, good. If it doesn't work...
I'm going to consider your motion to be a second to the motion already made.
Oh, okay.
With your permission.
That's fine.
Any discussion or questions?
Thank you. Part of the Marshawn Art Festival, this worked out great for Oktoberfest, so I think it'll work out great for us, too.
It's one heck of a festival. It really is. I think it's cool it's being moved up to our beautiful courthouse, too. Be interesting to see. Brings in artists from all over the country.
Your honor, I would second... Your Honor, I would second that as well. It is a wonderful event. The fact that the hours are from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. specifically, I think that limits the habitual drinking or the drinking of multiple, multiple, especially if it's a big hot day. But they, I think that our situation is good, that, again, you have said, the training of your volunteers and your staff. I think that the possibility of things not going as intended are very limited.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Yep, I think he didn't hear.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
No.
Carrie, thank you. Would you read the next resolution, please?
Resolution of support and financial commitment for the Marshalltown Iowa Main Street program.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So move, Your Honor.
I'll second.
Thank you. Please come forward.
Good afternoon, everyone. Nate McCormick, 1904 Bailey Drive, also the president of the Marshawn Central Business District. Just wanted to make a couple of very brief comments since we're, I'm sure, short on time over lunch, but Jenny had a family medical emergency, so I'm going to pinch it for her here to this afternoon. So, this resolution, you know, is something that we're required to do as the Central Business District in Marshalltown is part of a larger program of Main Street communities throughout the nation and throughout Iowa. Those Main Street communities consider the partnerships with the cities involved to be so critical that as part of our accreditation each year, we're required to come before the city council and request support both in principle and financially from the cities in which we have operations. Certainly, the previous support of the city has been critical to the success of the Marshawn Central Business District and in all the projects and programs that we've successfully completed over the years. The impact on the city of Marshalltown is tremendous. Everything from things like the pedestrian walkway, the flower baskets, the renovations of the Kibbe Building, Tall Corn Towers, McGregor's, these would not have been possible without the incredible support of the city and the support of our Main Street, Iowa and national Main Street programs. You know, the investment made just out of the challenge grants, over $175,000 into Marshalltown, the personal dollars invested as parts of those grants and matching programs has exceeded $11 million in Marshalltown, which is really, truly tremendous. So, you know, this partnership's really critical to our success, to the success of Marshalltown, and to the future success and growth and beautification of our downtown. Any questions?
Would you remind me how much this is again?
It's $24,500, I believe.
For the fiscal year that starts July 1st, it's $26,000, and that's just a one-year agreement. So, before December 1st of 2018, we'll need to come up with an agreement for the next year.
And this particular resolution does not specify a dollar amount. This is really a resolution of support from the city, again, to maintain our accreditation as a Main Street program.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So move.
We have one.
You had one already? Boy, I need more coffee today. And we've had a second? Okay. Any public comment? Or any comments received from the public?
No, Your Honor.
Roll call.
Martin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Carrie, thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the next resolution.
Resolution authorizing the application and acceptance of grant, if awarded, of a Martha Allen Ty Foundation grant for the Iowa River Trail Master Plan Project.
I guess we could call for a motion first.
I move that we pass this.
Is there a second? Our seconds are slow today.
Second.
We do better at night. Michelle, yeah, exactly.
Thank you. Michelle Spahnheimer, Housing Community Development Director. Just kind of, these next two resolutions do somewhat go together. And so, just so I don't repeat, I'm kind of talking about both of them, except for different organizations. I wanted to start out by just kind of backing up a little bit. Previously, at a council meeting, we had a resolution to accept a grant award from the National Endowment for the Arts, R-Town Program, if awarded. We had that before the official announcement was made on May 9th, which indicated that we were selected as a grantee to receive $25,000 from the NEA specifically for the R-Town Grant Program. That grant was intended, or is intended, to conduct a master plan for the Iowa River Trail, specifically addressing things like wayfinding, branding, public art inclusion, even trailhead development to some extent, as it kind of fits in with that overall theme. And the $25,000 NEA award does have to be matched, dollar for dollar, and we have those committed funds, $5,000 of which the council pledged when we applied way back in September. You had committed $5,000 to go towards that application, should we be successful. And then, the additional $20,000 is coming from the trails organizations in some fashion, whether it be direct from the Hardin County Trail Commission or Trails Incorporated, or their joint account funds, which certainly maybe Mayor can speak a little bit more to than even I can, and how those operate. But they do have a way to bring together that additional matching funds to support the NEA-required match dollars. So, that would bring us to our $50,000, what I'll call kind of a base amount. Originally, when we applied for the National Endowment for the Arts, we had applied for $50,000, hoping to have a total $100,000 project. So, when we received only 25, you know, that brought down our match amount. But we still have a large contingency of those partners that would like to still operate and get that goal of $100,000, because I think that would provide us with the best opportunities to get a plan that we're looking for. So, we're looking for other alternatives to find more money. We're not here asking the council to bring forward more money, but to authorize staff to apply for additional grants, to get us up to that $100,000 mark. So, the two resolutions I have before you, one is for the Martha Allen Ty Foundation. We would be looking to request up to $50,000 from them, with the hope that we are able to secure some other grants and don't need to go after a full $50,000. We have an application that will be putting forward to the Wellmark Foundation, a small match grant program, which is a maximum award of $25,000. So, for example, if we're able to get that grant for 25, then we would be looking to the Ty Foundation for 25 instead of the 50, to get us up to that full 100. We're also communicating with Region 6 Planning Commission and the Iowa DOT to maybe utilize planning grant dollars, transportation planning grant dollars, similar to what we used for the Highway 14 study, that we'll be, of course, hearing more about today. So, if, you know, we've got a couple of different opportunities that if one, or two, or all three were to come together, we would be able to maximize that award amount, get up to $100,000 goal, and really take a good look at that whole trail area and come up with some wonderful ideas for the future as trail develops. So, this is a plan project. It's not a construction project. It's not to actually implement public art building or commissioning of work, or put in signs. This is a planning project, where we will be able to come up with that overall branding and theme to carry out throughout the 34-mile trail, so that as projects move and trail gets built and communities start trailheads and other activities, they have a tool to use and a guide to use for what to develop and how it should look. And so, that's what we're excited about. The NEA R-Town Program is very heavily focused on community engagement, so that it will be a big piece of this project. And it's not just our residents here in Marshalltown. We would be the grant, we are the grantee. But as this is a 34-mile stretch, it's very important to hit all of those communities along that trail and encourage that participation with those folks. And so, we want each of these areas to have their own unique character. We want that to be maintained throughout the trail, yet having a kind of a unified presence that you know you're on the Iowa River Trail, no matter which point in that 34 miles you are at. And so, we're working with all those groups together. It's going to be a big committee group and a lot of people to pull together. But we've had some preliminary meetings, and I think everybody is real excited for the opportunity to do this and to really put together something that can be used by all those groups as that trail develops over the next several years. So, the first resolution you have before you is for the Martha Allen Ty Foundation for up to a $50,000 grant award. The second resolution you'll have on your agenda is for the Wellmark Foundation for $25,000. So, we hope to be able to secure them. The Wellmark Foundation one we would not know until December, which is part of why we are looking at multiple opportunities for funding. The NEA award would start August 1st, is the term of the grant, and run through July 31st of 2019. So, this is a project that'll actually take place during the next fiscal year.
Thanks, Michelle. And I have to give a shout-out to Marty Wyomar and you and Kim Scriber as the three main grant writers. We've raised over $4 million so far, and we're going to be paving out to the next, is it Hightower Road? I've forgotten the name of the...
Radio.
Radio Tower Road, thank you. This next summer, and now we're trying to do the fundraising to get up to Albin the next year after that. And at the Wednesday meeting of the Trails Inc. Board last week, they were pretty excited about this arts grant. Any other questions or discussion?
Michelle, when we talk about matches, and that comes from the city of Marshalltown, what funds specifically are we talking about when we do our match? Because we're getting into some numbers here, which I support, but where is it coming from?
I believe, and Jessica, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the $5,000, the $5,000 is what the city committed to match, out of the total budget. And I believe that's coming from the local option sales tax, which was agreed upon when the resolution was passed back in, probably August, actually.
Furthermore, it's my understanding that when Trails Inc. and the city council got together, it was via 28E agreements. I've come to understand that each project needs approval from the council for any matches that we might do. Is that correct? Am I stating that correct, even?
I'm going to defer that to Jessica.
I would say it depends. We are the fiduciary agent for any of the state or federal funding that comes through, and so, that doesn't require a separate agreement. But if you were to, as a city council, be putting forth funding that we didn't have budgeted for a project or a partnership with Trails Inc., that would come forward back to you, or that would come back to you for a separate approval.
Okay, I'm just offering out, off the top of my head, what constituents and citizens have said. There are a number of things that we've got ongoing, planned, and they all tie into the making Marshalltown a better place to live, work, and play, to recreate, and so on. Some of them, we don't know the final, or anything even approaching a final cost. And I'm talking about, what do we do in addition to the Highway 14 Center Street corridor? How far do we go with improvements to the municipal airport? What do we do when we have 60 homes plus not connected with just one egress and one ingress? Coming to mind are some other electrical, very serious electrical updates needed to the Riverview Park. I'm just cautioning all of us to look at these things and not go overboard. But I'm very supportive of the trails and what you've accomplished with the grant writing and with the many donors that are specific to this project.
Certainly, I think, you know, this is an example of how leveraging funds is so important. You know, with essentially a $5,000 investment from the city, we could be looking at $95,000 additional dollars coming into this project from other sources. You know, with the NEA grant, we are one of 60 in the country, and that's something to be very proud of, the only one to receive the funding in the state. So, you know, the federal organization that granted that saw the value in this project and what it can do for our communities, and I continue to support that. And I hope that all the projects are looked at in that fashion, and they are all individual things that do need to be considered. But I think that shows how we leverage resources to make those dollars go farther when there are limited, limited resources available.
Special congratulations to you and the team on the NEA grant. I know that's very difficult, having been in the capacity of a Red Cross grant writer. So, again, it's quite an accomplishment.
May I ask, I'm sorry, did you have a question?
Mr. Lamer?
I was just going to mention that I was having a little trouble with the funding process, but I now understand, I think, better, all that. A lot of the grants that the Bike Trail is asking for can't go to the Bike Trail. It has to come to us. So, that's why we have to approve all of these, is because they need, they need somebody who takes care of the cash disbursements, and that, in their eyes, that's a city. So, it isn't as though we are, we're going to apply for money that we're going to put a match to or anything. It's just that we're the guy that they all look to for the money to come to, and then we'll disperse it. So, I understand that all now, a lot better.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Cahill?
You specifically mentioned that this is for the planning aspect of the grant and the continuation, the construction and maintenance of the trail. What are the estimates for that down the road, as far as the city's portion of that?
You know, that's certainly something I can't answer, to be honest. I, you know, have been learning a lot about the trail stuff because I haven't been involved with from the beginning, but I'm sure there are many different components of the trail that require different things, and how that's being handled, what the trails groups are doing or fundraising for, what federal funds or state funds are maybe paying for versus what, you know, individual owners maybe are doing. I'm sure varies throughout that 34-mile stretch, perhaps. And so, that's something that I would assume, and please feel free to jump in if you have a...
I was going to say, I think, you know, what would be best, because there is a lot of conversation here, is that at some point, we do like a special work session or something where we have Trails Inc. here and have some conversation about what our existing agreements are and what our future commitments are as fiduciary agent, and now, you know, with this grant as well, and that that will hopefully be able to get all of your questions answered about those larger maintenance and funding issues.
That would be good.
Great idea.
I think, you know, as we met kind of in the starting committee, this is a question that kind of comes up because it's hard to separate sometimes. And so, a lot of the conversation I've been having with even some of the trauma is talking about that, how, you know, looking at this, this is this particular project associated with that planning effort, some of those branding and the theme, and it's not going to get into some of the details of who's maintaining, or who's building, or who's, you know, doing those things. This is really about kind of that branding of that trail and then the introduction of public art to the process and opportunities. So, sometimes hard to separate and pull ourselves away from the overall big picture. And so, I think that, yeah, informational meeting would probably be helpful.
Has that program study been priced yet? I mean, we're raising $100,000, is that...
The intention would be that the full budget would go towards the consultant to do that work, right? So, this all-funding raise would be going direct to hire the consultant to do that full plan, that full master plan. So, none of this would be going towards any implementation, or staffing, or anything of that nature.
If we are unable to secure some of the other grants that are there, are we looking at a $50,000 consultant plan rather than a $100,000 plan?
Correct, right. And we have outlined, initially, our thoughts are that in that scope, that request for qualifications that would go out, we may even see it as kind of a phased approach, since we won't know about like the Wellmark Foundation until December, is that the first, what I'll call kind of a three-tier look, is the first tier will be kind of an overall branding and looking at wayfinding and signage. and looking at wayfinding and signage and some theme type component. Second, you know, talking about identifying maybe certain areas that would be ideal for public art inclusion or trailhead location. And then that third phase, which allows for, if we are able to secure the full funding, to really get into more of conceptual design for a few of those areas. So picking one or two or three sections along the trail and really getting a little bit more, not full engineered drawings, we're not talking about construction drawings and engineered drawings, but more of conceptual development for, you know, maybe this trailhead or this bridge that's going to include public art or, you know, this nature area, whatever it might be. So as we are able to secure additional funding, that's a component that we could add to that scope of work with the consultant to refine some of those plans for some of those areas. So ideally, kind of thinking of it as a large umbrella first, we want to get the overall theme that can be carried out throughout the entire trail and then narrowing it down as our funding allows.
Thank you.
Any, any other questions? Or public comment?
Hi, Lee Bottor, 401 Orchard Drive. I am the co-founder of Splash for Life, as you guys know, and I think it's very important this week, being Memorial Day weekend, just to honor the four children that lost their lives in the Iowa River. And with that situation, I'm going to give a shout out, first of all, to Linehan Ricochet Club. Last week, we were awarded $500 towards the build for the splash pad and we continue in that. Going hand in hand with this particular resolution, we did submit requests from city administrator and handed out to council also support in helping write grants for the splash pad. It can be a small one, it can be a large one, whatever the case may be. But going hand in hand with this, I'd like the signage to take a little more than just a conceptual. And what we'd like to request is that we are working hand in hand with Trails Inc., with the city on developing that signage. We have some very creative ideas for art along the trails, things to bring water to the trails, which would be very instrumental for everything. And the other thing that we'd like to request is that there is consideration, that there are signage put up along the river. And there may be some legal issues with this that we work on, but we have checked into the DNR situation on putting some signage out there to try to discourage swimming within the river. So it would go hand in hand with the signage situation that we're looking at. I will commit on behalf of our committee, our board has met, and we would like to donate $1,000 towards the project in order to put signage out against the river for those river. And we will be more than happy to work with the city on that. But I am committing publicly that we are committing $1,000 to get signs out to that river. I don't want another child drowning this summer. And I would assume that you'd be in agreement with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment? Let's call the roll.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Lemur?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
It has carried. Let's go on to the next resolution, please.
Resolution authorizing the application and acceptance of a granted of a Wellmark Foundation grant for the Iowa River Trail Master Plan Project.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Lemur?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Lemur?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Lemur?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Lemur?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
And that has carried as well. We're up to item number five, which is a public hearing. So I'll declare the public hearing open at 12:55. Have we received any written comments?
I have not received any written comments.
Any public comments? Is there any staff review about the urban renewal area number two?
I'll, I'll just make some quick comments. You have the, the plan as, as part of your packet, that this is an amendment to our eastside urban renewal area to add in possible public improvement, public improvements. This in no way commits the city to actually complete those projects, but provides you with a possible funding source of tax increment financing should you proceed with those projects and with that funding source.
And, and back to written comments received by the clerk, I believe there was a letter received.
Yes, from the county, I thought.
Yes, from the county supervisor.
Thank you.
And so that should be part of the public record. Any comments by the council?
Did we respond to the county?
Yes, and I believe I sent that response to all of you as well. Just the, the question, the biggest question that was asked was would the, would the council ever consider partnering a development agreement with where we were taking on infrastructure needs as well? In any sort of development, that's hard to comment on, especially at this point when there is no bird in hand or anything at this point where, where there's something to contemplate. And so I just said that would be ultimately up to council discretion as to whether or not that would be something that you would choose to do in the future.
Okay, thank you.
And both the written comment from the county and the response are in the packet.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to say that all of us as city councilors are of the understanding that working with TIF, that it is not a productive means when it's considered for tax-exempt properties. And I think we're very strong on that. We've got to keep reminding ourselves that it's a progressive thing and we're looking for investment, we're looking for progress, where we're looking to work with private investors. So that's an important concept that we need to keep in mind, I believe.
Thank you. Any other councilor comments?
I would be concerned that this is a large item and a very important item and we don't have a full council here. So I would be concerned that maybe this should wait till we have a full council.
Any other comments or suggestions? Let's declare the public hearing is closed now at 12:58 PM. Is there a motion to approve or to table?
Your Honor, in, as requested by Mr. Hoop, I would move that we table this item till our next council meeting and then take a vote on it when all the councilors are present.
Is there a second to the motion to table?
Second.
I don't believe this one's debatable, but in case I'm wrong, is there any further discussion? Good, let's call the roll.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Lemur?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Lemur?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Lemur?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
And that has carried as well. We're up to item number five, which is a public hearing. So I'll declare the public hearing open at 12:55. Have we received any written comments?
I have not received any written comments.
Any public comments?
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Lemur?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
And that has carried, thank you. Now down to ordinances, item I, one. Would you read that, please, Madam Clerk?
This is the first reading of ordinance amending Chapter 26 Streets and Sidewalks, Article 3 is by repealing current language and adopting new language.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved, Your Honor.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion.
This does take into consideration the comments that you provided from our last discussion, as well as then, I think there was one cross-reference that I found with another ordinance related to barricading of sidewalks or barricading of right-of-way when there is some, a contractor doing work in the right-of-way. And so what we have here is a, a final proposed ordinance for a first reading.
Thank you. Public comment?
Harvey Varnum, 1302 South Sixth Street. I wonder if there's something shady going on with this ordinance. One part I read in there had a sign out on the street there that's going to propose a sidewalk. And I called up here and he says, well, that's going to be put on hold. Well, it was a couple of meetings ago, he was talking about a trail ride, or not trail ride, but a bike ride, cart path up to the Legion bypassing the golf course and the bowling alley up to the Legion. And then what I read in the paper, you want to tie a sidewalk in with a bike path? Is that correct? Now, we've got sidewalks in nowhere all over Marshalltown. And I just wonder if we're bailing this dude developer out for, he gets a sidewalk put in the cart path where the property tax owners pay for it and he won't have to put a sidewalk here on Sixth Street. I know there's property up there just south of Bowling Alley that's not, that hasn't been sold yet. But if this ordinance passes through, then he buys that ordinance and so he'll get out of building a sidewalk on Sixth Street. The taxpayers will have to pay for the sidewalk they put on the bike pathway, I understand it. I asked Councilman Gowdy, is he supporting the Legion or the taxpayers? And I never got a call back. So I'm assuming, I know Mike is pretty active in the Legion, so if that ever comes up to vote, I think Mike ought to do the honorable thing and not vote on it. Thank you.
To clarify- Oh, go ahead.
Wasn't that, wasn't that sign out there because he was requesting because of the topo of the ground, the difference to build a sidewalk there? He was asking for a waiver on the sidewalk?
Yes.
Yeah, if you, if I may, I'll address that. Michelle Spahnheimer, the request that was before the Board of Adjustment was for a sidewalk deferment. What a deferment is, is just a delay of installation of a sidewalk. If at any point the city determines a sidewalk should be installed at a given location that's been deferred, it is the property owner's cost to bear to install that sidewalk and to do it in a time as requested. So that request to defer the sidewalk on Sixth Street was approved by the Board of Adjustment. And again, if at some point the city determines that a sidewalk should be installed along that portion of Sixth Street, that would be the owner's expense to do so and he has an understanding of that. So the, they did look at the topography and those kinds of things as part of that consideration by the board approval. The ordinance still includes a deferment process in it, the ordinance before you. However, it does change it from going through the board review to an administrative review. And so the, myself and city engineer are able to look at each situation that's a deferment request, take into consideration those type of circumstances such as topography and make a decision. The same would hold true that if at any point in the future deferment is called upon, that the owner would be responsible for installing a sidewalk, it would not be the responsibility of the taxpayers.
And, and just to clarify, the, the one change in the ordinance for deferral or deferments, how it exists now to how it is, is the administrative review, but with an appeal to the council. Currently, none of these deferments come to you at all. This would put you as the final say on whether or not a sidewalk should be installed.
The one issue that I brought up at the last meeting hasn't been changed.
Our city engineer can comment on that.
Counselor Lemur, if you read that, let me find it exactly.
It's number seven.
It reads that if the sidewalk is contiguous with the curb right up adjacent to the curb, that it shall be at the same elevation. But then the second half of that statement says that if there is space between the curb and the sidewalk, the sidewalk shall be elevated at a half an inch per foot of distance. So if it's four feet away, the sidewalk would be two inches above the curb line. So it covers whether it's adjacent to the curb or whether there's a green space or a, a space in between the curb and the sidewalk. It's, it's appropriate.
What happened to our six inch? It's been six inches in this town ever since the town was founded.
I can go and look at the last one. I can't guarantee you that that's not the case, but I don't believe that is the case.
Well, 30 years we replaced them when we messed them up over at the waterworks and you always made us put them in six inches. You didn't.
I never got the joy of making you repair something.
You didn't. Thank God. We were always required to put them in six inches above. And I still think six, the six-inch thing should be a minimum because you've got enough elevation and it's your responsibility and not yours, it's the city's responsibility to control all the water between the two property loans.
I like a half inch per foot of difference.
And that way, that way you have full control of that water.
Yep. It's appropriate, in my opinion.
Okay. So when I put my new driveway in this year, I don't have to put it aside, do I? I can put it down lower. Yeah.
Hey, guys, it'll be six inches, you watch.
You're out of order again. Any other questions? Let's call the roll.
Lemur?
Yes.
Weren? Martin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
No.
It has carried and on to the last ordinance, number two. Would you read that item, please?
This is the first reading of an ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinances by amending Chapter 20, Section 2169 prohibiting parking when snow removal operations are in progress. And it also addresses parking on Fourth Street, so I need to change my title.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Any second?
Second.
Discussion.
What is it we're doing here?
These were, actually, these were changes that were identified by council members Gowdy and Hoop related to a parking or a pickup and drop-off area around Pleasant View and then I believe a, a snow removal area on Seventh Avenue?
Fifth Avenue.
Fifth Avenue. And so I don't know if you'd like to speak more about those or-
So we're, this is to remove the signs or is this going to leave, going to remove them?
Yes, those, those specific things were stated specifically within our ordinance in the, in the sections. And so in order to make any changes related to the, the pickup and drop-off zones and where, you know, snow removal restrictions are, you have to then remove those addresses or those locations from our Code of Ordinances.
Okay.
That was, that was the reason for that is Fisher School, because of that limitation on alternate parking. If you go down there, when, when schools let out, there's a lot of children that are running around on the sidewalks and the parents are going around in a circle waiting for their children. And this is for a one-block area on, on Fourth Street from Sunset to Pleasant View to be able to park on both sides of the street. There's only one driveway there, so it's not really a, I think that was a kind of a blanket thing when they were put in. And it's just, I would rather see parking on both sides when, when the school's in session or when it's let out and because of the children waiting for their parent or guardian or whoever to pick them up and instead of looking for them, they can stay on the sidewalk and not cross. I just thought it was, it was safety reasons to remove that, those two signs.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
My question is, does this appear, as, as it reads, it talks about prohibited at all times except as provided by the Section 20. So I am confused on how this affects non-school time. Can you please share that with me?
It goes back to what's not stated in the ordinance, that exception-
My question is, does this appear, as, as it reads, it talks about prohibited at all times except as provided by the Section 20. So I am confused on how this affects non-school time. Can you please share that with me? Someone?
It, it goes back to what's not stated in the ordinance. That exception is that 20-162.1. And let me pull up my Code of Ordinances here. Unless Justin can speak to this.
I think I have it here, too. Temporary stops for the sole purposes of immediate discharge or immediate loading of students shall be permitted, but only in the event that off-street areas for such discharge or loading do not exist within 300 feet of any exit door of said school. Any such temporary stop shall be for a duration of the shortest possible time necessary to discharge or load. Students shall be done in a manner that will not impede or hamper general traffic, and the driver shall remain in the vehicle.
Okay. Thank you for reading that. So by removing the area on Pleasant View to Sunset, or South Fourth Street between Pleasant View and Sunset, makes it so that all times there can be basically parking there. And I think that was the intention that Councilmember Goudy was trying to get at. So it's not just a school pickup and drop-off for temporary, that it's at all times that that parking would be available.
And the same issue applies at the other schools? You, you were saying that it's for the safety at all schools, that there can be parking on both sides?
In this particular instance, there, there, the only need for it would be during the, the loading and unloading, or the start of school and the end of school. That being said, unless you want to write the ordinance to allow parking on just one side when the school is not in session, I think that's a futile attempt of putting signs up and down. And I didn't think that was, it was a great amount of energy to, to do that because of the simple fact that it's for a one-block area.
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
Pretty concerned about the high traffic, high volume of traffic, meaning people traffic, first of all. And I'm thinking if it's not wide enough, you've got parking on both sides, you've got people darting between cars. I, I'm, I'm apprehensive of this. I don't have a solution, I'm sorry.
That was my best solution I could come up with without vehicles driving around and around on Bringleston and, and Fourth Street and Sunset to pick up their, their children. I think we're talking a great amount of children. I, I'm not sure exactly how many people, children go to Fisher School, but that was an idea that I thought would probably cure that. I believe we went through the same thing on the south side of Fisher School, which was not allowed, and they had to install a, a pickup lane, if, per se. And you get into something like that, then if you go by there when school gets out, you'll notice that that whole lane is full, probably an hour to an hour and a half before school gets out, for the simple fact that there's so many people that don't ride the buses anymore. They bring their children, and it's, you can see the, the same effect at Lenahan. If you've ever been down by there when, when they let out school, there's, there's a few buses, and most of them are pedestrian, walking, or children walking to, to their vehicles, which is not a great concern because on the north side, usually it's two lanes of pickup and, and one lane going the other way, because nobody really bothers to stay in line. They just go and pick up children. And so it, it's a concern, and it's also a concern that, that I brought up, a signal on, on Engle Do and Sixth Street. If you've ever tried to be down in that area when school gets out, it's, it's a mess there. It's also a mess on, on South Street, High Street. There're just a tremendous amount of people driving and picking up their children now instead of the busways. I'm not sure what that reasoning is, but...
One of the things where I would leave this up to your discretion, I can't pull it up on the map because I don't have the keyboard back here, but this is an area that's just to the south of Fisher Elementary, kind of the southeast. And there is currently only sidewalk on one side of the road. Part of what will be coming forward to you on June 11th or sometime in June, related to filling of the gaps, is a lot of work in this area, including on the opposite side of the South Fourth Street between Pleasant View and Sunset, which we're talking about adding an additional sidewalk so that you would be able, so that four, that crosswalk right now, which basically has a crosswalk across, you know, four sides of that intersection of Pleasant View and South Fourth Street, would then have people able to go north and south on both sides of the street. And I can't remember, I think the proposed gap stuff does have something going further on Pleasant View as well. And so if this is of concern to you now, we will soon be discussing, you know, possible sidewalk gaps in that area that we could certainly tie in this conversation to that as well.
Have we made contact and ongoing contact with the school district and the school?
Yes, so there was, this spring, myself and Justin Nickel went out and met onsite with the principal there and had some discussions, including more information about, you know, gaps that were identified back in 2007, 2008, as well as then this gap between South Four, or on South Fourth between Pleasant View and Sunset. And then the police department has done a, a great amount of engagement out there to try and do the best as possible with people blatantly avoiding driving regulations and parking regulations and creating unsafe situations. So there's, there's been, and that's not just at Fisher Elementary with the police department, that's at all the elementary schools. And so there's, there's been an ongoing discussion, but specifically in this area, I can foreshadow for you that with the sidewalk gap information, there were a number of sidewalks in this area that weren't completed back in 2008, and then there's some additions as well to continue to make things through.
Other questions or comments? Let's call the roll.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Carried on to item J, which is discussion. And the first item is about the senior citizens' building.
Yes, I included quite a bit of information in your packet on the senior citizens' building. To give you an idea, we currently have two renters there. The first level is occupied by the senior center, or Marshall County Senior Center, and the upper level is occupied by the Northeast, Northeast, Northeast Iowa Area Agency on Aging. Both of them, well, I shouldn't say both of them have leases. Currently, only the, the downstairs occupants have a lease, which they have requested to renew for two years. As part of the budget process, and knowing that backfill could, could be a possibility, Diana Steiner and I had been looking at things, and the senior citizens' building is one of those items which had come up and was one where we were, we were budgeting in the fiscal year to start July 1st, we were budgeting that that building was going to cost us $30,000 above and beyond the rent. And so what I, then Mayor Greer and I had a meeting with some of the representatives from the Marshall County Senior Center to have a conversation about long-term operations, and ultimately what I would like to propose to you as a closure of that building at some point. I would prefer sooner because the, the more money that we, we are spending, the more money that is not to go towards some other operation or whatever you would direct it to. But the date that they had put out there was December 31st of 2019. And so what I would request before you today is that we move forward, or that there be a motion to move forward to direct me to work on leases with both tenants for the rent that they are paying, which is currently $400 a month through December 30th of 2019, or until they, they basically can vacate the premises, whichever comes sooner.
Your Honor, I have a question. Do we supplement the programming for those, or we truly just own the building and we are renting it to these, to, to organizations?
It is, it's the latter that you said there, that we are, we are a landlord and they are our tenant, and that's, that's the arrangement that we have.
Thank you.
I believe from having served on the board upstairs, that has basically dismantled. We haven't had a meeting in two years. The city does do some things like helping on, on the upkeep. They've helped repair some things in the past. But, and the downstairs folks that we met with, they, they could actually either increase the rent or they have a fund available to them if they need to move someplace else. And so they're, they're looking at their options there. We know that when the Coliseum is done, that might be a logical place for the seniors to, to attend. As I understand it from visiting with them, they've been dropping in usage numbers over the years.
We, in, in our conversation, you know, this is not something where we just want to kick, kick them out on the street, which is why the, the longer timeline, but also if there's anything we could do to assist in providing them another location. But at, at this point, I would recommend that we not get into a, a, a long-term landlord-tenant situation.
Is there a motion to direct staff to continue to look at the leases?
Can I make a comment first?
You bet.
I'd like to make one, too.
I think before we boot them out on the curb, I think we need to help them or find a place. The Coliseum would be great, but I don't know the future of that renovation. But seems like everything we're doing in the city right now is geared towards younger people and drawing people in and giving them things to do. There are, there are some folks out there that, they're kind of my age that, that really use that place, and it gives them something to do each day. And I think we, we have to make sure that we have a place like that somewhere. So I'd be a little, little area of pushing real hard. And I understand the cost problem. But you might want to compare it to our aquatic center that loses a lot of money every year, and we just keep funding and pushing that. And I think the elderly people, I hate to use the word elderly, the guys my age or ladies need somewhere to be.
I agree with you completely, and that's why we offered up some potential. The timeline for a Coliseum renovation is something that's going to be problematic with a 2019 date. The, the bigger picture of why December 31st, 2019 also makes sense is because in 2020, we have some ADA compliance issues to meet where we'd have to be installing a new elevator. And so I'd like you to think of this as we're closing that building. The request is to close that building as of December 31st, 2019, but we will do what we can to help them find a different location by that time. But this is essentially a conversation about, do you want to start investing money in that building to make it code compliant and to address the, our, as you saw in the budget there, our biggest issues are energy issues. We're spending more on natural gas and electricity than we're even gathering in, in rent, or it's almost, I think, double of what we're, we're gathering in rent. And so those are the issues that need to be fixed. Do you want to close the building, or do you want to pursue a rehabilitation of that building? And I think that's really what's before you here today, that if we close that building, it doesn't take rehabilitation off the table, but at least provides us some more time. Otherwise, I would think if we're not going to be closing, I need to come back to you with a plan of what needs to be done to make that a viable building, starting January 1 of 2020.
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
Having been the chairman of that board for quite a while, but then I dropped out, now that I need the services, I probably should be going back. But anyway, we just, we just, the council just added two new parks, and we're talking about doing more stuff so people have someplace to go and someplace to do something. And I think it's wrong to even think about kicking these people out. I think it's wrong unless we have a place for them to go because they're just as important to this community. Matter of fact, I, how do I want to put this nicely? The majority of the people going there are the people that, that make major contributions to city funding, and when we're going out and asking people to, to fund something privately, those people dig in their, in their pocketbooks because they can't afford it. And I think we need to provide them with the same service that we're providing everybody else in this town, and kicking them out is, I'm not in favor of that at all. Unless we have a place for them to go, and we're going to help them with it, I'm not, I, I, I can't do that.
I agree with Councilman Lamer that, yes, we do need to have services, and also with Councilman Hoop, that we need to have services for all those, all members of our community. I do think that we need to put forth a study of other sites that would be, excuse me, more economical and more practical for the use. I think within our community, we have a number of those facilities that maybe we could partner with some other people. We will have our own facilities, the police department or the, the fire department when those buildings are vacated. So we have some other facilities that maybe would cost less or be more economical to use. I worry that this building, the physical building, will cost an extremely high amount to rehabilitate to the ADA standards, and I think that that will put us, we need to decide the, the, how we are going to go about whether that building is worth saving or whether we can find another facility that we have that will work just as well. But I agree, I don't think that we should, we should just say, "Find your own facility." I think that we should be an active participant in that. But I also agree that if we are just being the landlord, we need to be very economical about what we're doing.
And, and I, I would hope Mayor Greer would say this, and, and our conversation with them was it in no way, "We just want to boot you out on the street." We had brought up the, the conversations about other facilities which would be vacated by December 31st, 2019 or sooner. And so whatever, however you want me to spend my time is your prerogative. And so if you want me to work with them to find other places, I don't think that was ever taken off the table. My advice to you is that we should not be in a landlord-tenant situation, and that that building is going to be one that is going to continue to cost us. And how long can we continue to have a general fund where that's going to be a cost that will be there on an ongoing basis?
Tell me why we can't be the landlord.
I, I would just, I think Justin's there to tell you that...
We've deferred maintenance every year that I've been your public works director. I would guess we could spend a quarter of a million dollars today just to keep it going.
No, no, I don't mean on that building. I just mean you said, you don't want to be, you don't want to be in that type of a situation.
Because what's not...
We're, we're a landlord for every park in town, for the aquatic center, for all that other stuff, for everybody else. Why can't we be a landlord for them?
What I would say is what is not reflected on that budgetary sheet that's showing that next year we're budgeting a $29,800 loss on that, is the amount of staff time that is spent there. And so ultimately, we have basically one facilities manager and then two facilities people to cover everything outside of parks. And as you can imagine, we do have a lot of buildings with facility needs. And so anytime that we're, we're needing to keep a building up to a certain standard because we've specified that we would keep it up to that standard for whoever's paying the rent, that's where we have issues. And I, I don't know what the workload is currently for Dave and, and his unit, but I do know that they're pretty frequently busy around the city with other facilities that are used in our, in our operations.
Fair statement. No, I was just going to bring up that we've deferred maintenance for at least four or five years now, and we, we're about at the point of no return where next year the chickens may come home to roost, and we may have to spend a quarter of a million dollars and not even, not even really get anything out of it other than keeping the lights on and doors open.
Your Honor, just a question. Have we ever approached them about, or I know it's probably new to them somewhat, but have we ever, in the conversation, thought about giving them the property and let them take up the, the upkeep and ADA requirements without letting any information out? Only because I know a few of the people that are on the board, so that may be, it may be a possibility. I had thought all along, when I brought up the, the initial idea of utilizing the Coliseum upstairs... upstairs for that purpose, or the basement, depending on that, and found that we could not get any grant money if we, if we went along with the whole remodel. I've also changed an attitude, if we leave some of that and upgrade the rest of the Coliseum into a usable facility, other than expanding the court system. I know that's a, pretty close to a losing proposition itself. I still think there's some possibilities with the Coliseum and also with the senior citizens there. I guess that would be two different options, but seems like we've put off the Coliseum remodeling effort, other than just getting to the fact that we couldn't get grant money with leaving it partly the way it is. So it seems to be a dead issue, which I'm sure is a bitter pill for a lot of the veterans in this community. That being said, I think that's a possibility that you could look into.
Well, just to clarify on the Coliseum, it is not a dead issue. We have a consultant, an architect, and engineer working on plans and specifications now, which are to be complete by June 30th, for the proposal to remodel it per the feasibility study, which was not making it compliant with historical standards. And so, you're going to have to have a conversation very soon about the future of the Coliseum, probably as soon as those plans and specs are done, and what you want to do at that point. So that conversation will be coming up. I just don't think that it will be, if you said move tomorrow on doing something dramatic over there with the plans and specs, that even by December 31st, 2019 would be hard. It's probably something that's a 2020 beyond project. And so, that's where I think there's, you know, the Coliseum is something that they said would be very desirable, but it's not currently, what I would say is on a timeline where you all would be able to move forward with that project to accommodate 2019.
Well, the reason I made that statement is because I've been working on it for at least three years that I know of, to try to get that to a point of revitalization. And that being said, I didn't realize that we were doing, and that's maybe that would have been fair to say that that should have been a memo to the council that this was ongoing. It seems like we get to a point, and the last thing, or the, one of the items that comes up that we don't normally know too much about is brought up at a council meeting. And it tends to leave us in a vulnerable state that we don't know what's going on in the city. I regret saying that public because I should have brought it up in a private conversation, but I think the city, us as leaders of the community, the citizens of Marshalltown expect us to know what's going on in this city. And when we get phone calls, like I did over the weekend, why the Aquatic Center was not open, probably 11 of them on my home phone, and I had at least six of them on my cellphone. So that being said, I think we, we try to do the best we can with the knowledge we have. And when we're confronted with some of this out in the public, and we don't have that knowledge, it tends to leave egg on our face. And I hate to be in that position. I've lived here for a number of years, went past my anniversary of 44 years here in the city. And it frustrates me to no point that we do not get all the information on a timely basis. And if that's a fault of ours as a council, then I would like to change that. But there's too many ongoing things in this city that we need information on. And before I step down off my soapbox, I would just like to make that clear, that a lot of times, we don't get some of that information. And it's very hard for us to be out in the community as the forefront for our city. And that being said, I will yield.
In fairness, Councilmember Gowdy, since the council did approve the contract with GTG, there were some initial meetings related to energy efficiency and what we were looking for there, which were many months ago, but there have not been, there's not been anything provided, other than they're continuing to develop those plans and specifications. So there really has not been an update to give you, other than their work is ongoing. But the contract date of June 30th is when they're supposed to provide us that information. So I apologize if that's information we haven't kept out there, but ultimately, there was not a new update to provide at this point in time.
I think it was about a year ago that the Thai Foundation donated, was it $25,000 for the feasibility study? So we did approve that too, two years ago?
So if this is something that, I will say to what Councilmember Gowdy had said previously, and I had confirmed with Mayor Greer, we did not ask them if they wanted the building. They did not make any known proclamations that they would like the building. But if you would like us to at least ask that question to both entities as to whether or not they would be willing to purchase the building, we can certainly bring this back for future discussion. But I also just want you to really know the lay of the land here, is that if December 31st, 2019 is not there, out there as an oper, or as an option to close the facility, we need to be planning for that facility very much the same way we are planning for the Coliseum at this point.
We did have a discussion too about opening the doors to discussions with people like those that are running the Fisher Community Center. I know there are three groups now that are working on turning that into a museum and improving the artwork. There's plenty of space there. The Heritage Center at the Y might be another dialogue that the senior center could have with the Y, the Y folks. And there are other spaces around town that are available too, many of which are way less expensive to heat and cool and nicer, frankly, than this building. The deferred maintenance in this building makes me ashamed to walk in there, truly. And I'm 65 years old, I qualify. I'd go in for the board meetings and would just think this is awful. We need a big benefactor to give a lot of money to build a nice new senior center, because little towns have better places than we've got here for the seniors.
That's right.
But in the meantime, I do recommend that we give the staff direction, and we probably need to have a deadline out there so that the seniors, the seniors know that they need to be looking. Failing, is there more discussion?
We can bring it back for continued discussion, too.
Since we haven't had a motion to direct staff, we probably need to do that.
I think the continuing discussion, or continued discussion, means that you should reach out, or we should reach out to these groups. I think you have already and mentioned things, but maybe it does need further discussion, but I don't have any, my suggestions for other places are not meaningful, I don't think, but depends on their needs. So you can either go ahead with a part of this, as far as I'm concerned, or put it into a motion for direction.
It's really up to you. If this comes back for future discussion, I think we would try and put together some initial, a list of the maintenance items that would, not only maintenance items, but actual projects that would need to be done with some cost estimates, so you'd get the other side of the picture as well, if we're going to try and keep that facility open. And so, what I want you to think about, and I get that this is a difficult conversation, we're talking about a building. We're not talking about the quality of these two organizations or their missions and the things that we're doing. And so, there are other facilities, I think 2019, December 31st, 2019, is enough time that those conversations can happen about where to relocate. But what I want you to be thinking about is that we have responsibility for that building, whether or not we're renting it or otherwise, that that's our responsibility.
Your Honor.
Yes.
I would move to the staff go ahead and start the process of putting together a lease, but I want something in the lease that says that 2019, or December 19, 2019, that if, if these people don't have a place to go, we're not kicking them out. The lease can be extended until proper location is found that's suitable for them to do what they need to do. I'm willing, I know the building costs a ton, because I used to help pay some of those bills, and, but I want to make sure that these people understand that we're not kicking them out, that we're going to help them, and we're going to find a place that's very suitable for them, and we're going to work with them to do it. And we're going to have a lease, but they need to understand that lease can be extended if we haven't found something. Okay?
Is there, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Any further discussion?
I would be very concerned with language such as that in a lease, because then we would have the liability to, if it extends past December 31st of 2019, then we would be in violation on January 1st if we have not done the updates. I would be more in favor of saying we would work with them to find a suitable spot if we have not come to a permanent location on 20, December 31st, 2019, that we would find a suitable spot until a full-time spot could be, could be secured.
The big item is the elevator, right?
I would...
So if the upstairs group, if we could find a place for them, but we haven't found one for the downstairs, we're not in violation because they're not going to use the elevator.
Potentially, but I think the, that's the big...
Yes.
Building cost, but the big operational cost is just the insulation and, yeah, I mean, the facility itself.
Okay, just so we're not, they understand we're not, we're going to work with them, and we're going to find something suitable.
Well, let me propose this, that the staff kind of has an idea what our temperature is, and you can propose something at the next meeting.
Yeah, I was going to say, I don't know if it'll be at the next meeting, because I would like to talk to both organizations a little bit more. But, but yes, at some point, this would just start the process for me to have the authority to go and start negotiating.
Everybody okay with that, or would you like to call, I don't think we had a second.
Yeah, we did.
We did?
And then, so Lamer moved to start the lease and extend it until the building is okay, second by Gowdy, and then Cahill. So was yours an amendment, or...
I could make it an amendment. I could make it an amendment to the motion that, that the building would be vacated by December 31st, 2019, but suitable meeting space would be found until a permanent location, if a permanent location is not secured by that time.
Is there a second to that amendment?
A second.
Let's vote on the amendment, the amendment first. Roll call.
On the amendment, we have Martin.
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Okay, that passed, and so now, let's vote on the amended motion.
Martin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
No.
Hoop?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Carry it.
Carry it.
Okay, last item of discussion is the Highway 14 corridor study. And I know that we had Bolton and Mink representative here.
Yeah, I was going to say, I can take a moment to introduce Casey Byers, who has been our project manager for this. And we also have Jim Harbaugh, who was the principal with Bolton and Mink for this project. And so, hopefully, it's a, it's a big study. It is out there on our website, and then you should all have a paper copy as well. And I think Casey's going to give us some highlights here.
Yeah, good afternoon. I'm going to try to keep this relatively brief in the interest of time here, but please understand, this is a pretty complex document, and you all have a copy of it, 130 pages. Sums up approximately five months of planning, both improvements within the Highway 14 right-of-way, as well as outside of the right-of-way, for the area that we're calling the study area from Anson Street north to the river. The contents of this document includes a look at community profile, understanding who lives in Marshalltown, and comparing this population to similar corridors. An in-depth analysis or review of our public outreach process. And then it gets into kind of the visioning for the right-of-way improvements, implementation strategies for making specific changes within the corridor that'll ultimately craft the corridor visioning, which is the last section in the, in the document. Overall, there's, there's four main components of this, of this process. Again, keeping in mind that it's kind of two separate projects working as one, with the space within the public right-of-way and the space on the exterior of the right-of-way. But the first process is to, the first phase of the process is to collect information, learn about the corridor, learn about the businesses and the residents here, and learn kind of what are the challenges that exist along the corridor. The second is to conceptualize the right-of-way, look at making, you know, specific changes that are going to make the goals of the community achievable, and doing that within the right-of-way. It's important to understand with this project, that this is being kind of driven by the Iowa Department of Transportation's plans to resurface Highway 14, and they're going to be letting that project this fall. So as we, as we begin to talk about what improvements there are to be made, there's specific improvements that are somewhat timely, if they're meant to coincide with what the DOT's plans. Just to understand what those are, is they're going to be resurfacing the street, they're not moving any curb lines, there are going to be some ADA improvements made at pedestrian ramps, but their primary focus is to repave the surface of Highway 14. The third piece here is to develop an implementation approach, and the fourth is to explore corridor potential. The implementation approach basically makes, you know, the land use planning principles and the corridor-wide approach a reality. A brief overview of our public facilitation plan, we've had several meetings, we had well over 800 participants throughout this process. We held meetings in various locations throughout the corridor, trying to broaden our reach to the community and make this an inclusive process. The five main goals that were, that came out of the understanding with the public and the input process are as follows. And the first one is creating a safe corridor for all users. This is for vehicles, this is for pedestrians, this is for cyclists. Anybody that uses the Highway 14 corridor, there's, there's safety improvements that need to be made, and go above and beyond simply a resurfacing project as the DOT currently has planned. The second goal is to increase economic vitality along the corridor. This looks at promoting development and fostering businesses and, you know, catering to the businesses that have been well-established here, and trying to increase a little more activity in this area. Creating active and attractive open space, there's two really high-quality open spaces that anchor both ends of this corridor. There's been a lot of conversation about what we can do in the intermediate space, kind of closer to downtown, to make a more vibrant open space. Fourth goal is to improve land use compatibility. There's a lot of incompatible land use scenarios along the corridor, where you have industrial next to residential. It's, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't bode well for both, and there's opportunities that we can improve that. And lastly, is to improve and increase walkability along the corridor, make it more pedestrian-friendly. A quick look at existing traffic volumes and crash history data, from 2013 to 2017, there's 221 reported accidents along this corridor from Anson Street north. There are 75 accidents that caused injury, and one accident causing a fatality. Approximately $1.3 million in property damage as a result of these accidents, and on average, it costs about $5,800 per crash. Existing traffic volumes range from right around 13,000 vehicles a day on the south end of this, down by Anson Street, and that, that decreases as you go north. I think by the time you get to Woodland, that's down around 7,000 vehicles a day. To put this in comparison, you know, we, this project is kind of centered around one main concept... main concept, and that's a road diet scenario, and I'll explain that more, but that road diet is a four-to-three lane conversion with a one-travel lane in each direction with a dedicated center turn lane. To compare the traffic volumes here to what the DOT considers to be kind of a threshold for their three-lane roads, they look at 20,000 vehicles a day as kind of that threshold for a three-lane road. This is very diagrammatically looking at kind of all these concepts coming together in the plan. There's several areas that we've identified for, as a study area for urban design, which is kind of the latter part of this document. We looked at key locations for gateway monuments, a lot of talk about signage, there are specific locations where it makes sense to do that along this corridor. The blue box that extends the corridor, that's kind of our four-to-three lane conversion, so again, we're looking at that as a proposed improvement along the corridor, as well as various trail and pedestrian connections at key locations. Within the document, there are essentially 10 different right-of-way improvement projects identified. In the document, we describe them in Plan View, there's various call-outs with descriptions as to what some of the proposed improvements are within the right-of-way. Those are then accompanied by a cross-section analysis, which looks at the existing cross-section for those locations and what the proposed cross-section could be. In certain scenarios, like the one from the viaduct to State, there's actually a couple different scenarios that could be considered for this area. Again, this is just based on kind of what the space allows and what the right-of-way has potential for. One thing I do want to point out with these, and I'm going to use this example of the area from Woodbury to Riverside, this is the most narrow, the narrowest portion of the right-of-way along this entire corridor, and it's 56 feet wide. What you have now is four travel lanes that are 11 feet wide, and that goes to the face of curb. We have about a two-foot buffer strip between the sidewalk, and then we have a four-foot sidewalk. With that four-to-three lane conversion, that road diet scenario, we're able to get an 11-foot travel lane in each direction with a 12-foot center turn lane, and actually have a two-foot buffer outside of that travel lane for curb and gutter. That's something that's not accounted in your current cross-section. That four-foot boulevard space between the sidewalk and the street now becomes a much more comfortable scenario, and a little more space and separation between vehicles and pedestrians. This is an existing look at this particular cross-section, and then here's the proposed improvement strategy for how that could be changed. Again, just the change in space between the sidewalk and the street is dramatic, it makes a considerable amount of difference there. Other things that this doesn't represent really is just what this does from a site-distance standpoint. At certain intersections, buildings are right up to the edge of the right-of-way, it's very difficult to see oncoming traffic. This actually bumps out the travel lane a little further, provides a little more site-distance to the oncoming vehicles. Couple other things to note on this image, there's potential for decorative street lighting, you can bury the electrical feed that runs along the existing roadway, so it kind of cleans up that a bit, and also provides more space for where that, those utilities are placed. Here's another example, down at the very north end of the study area, by executing this concept, here's the potential for what proposed improvements could look like down the road. One of the primary areas that was discussed among community and the city staff were the Marion Street intersection and the Riverside Street intersection, as well as a potential for rerouting truck traffic, trying to provide an opportunity to get trucks safely to their destination without impacting so many residents and pedestrians. As part of an immediate or kind of near-term improvement recommendation is to improve the Marion Street intersection. This is where the one fatality occurred in 2017. The other piece on this graphic that we identified was to realign the Riverside Street intersection, kind of get rid of that kind of weird boulevard space there and the separated travel lanes, and clean up and align that intersection so it's not so confusing, and it could potentially reduce conflicts at that location. So for each one of the, I'm not going to go through every improvement project, so I'm just picking a few of the ones that came up the most during the process, but the notion of this connection or extension of Edgewood was something that we conceptualized during the process. This is a completely new roadway that would take trucks and other vehicles from Edgewood and tie them into North 8th Avenue. There's approximately 150 to 200 trucks that are coming in and out of the JBS facility alone every day, and a lot of them are using the Marion Street intersection, which really currently isn't designed to handle truck traffic. So, and alternate means would be just a completely different route to get them to where they're going, and get them away from the residential neighborhood, and reducing the impact on a lot of the businesses that have established and are calling this Highway 14 corridor home. So at the end of that section of the right-of-way improvements is a table that looks at each improvement area, and then it lists the primary project components of each project or phase, potential funding sources that look at transportation-related improvements, and then an overall budget range. This is very conceptual, and this is a very planning-level look at each one of these projects. So, please understand that the budget for each one of these is meant to, you know, kind of be conservative really, and cover the broad range of, you know, unknowns that we don't have, that we, that are out there right now. We do include, to the best of our ability, as much detail as we can in those numbers, there's a contingency in there to cover things that we don't know, as well as planning and engineering fees as well. These costs also include general pavement improvement costs that would actually be contributed by the Iowa DOT as part of their resurfacing funds. So outside of the right-of-way, looking at kind of chapters five and six of this document, we've identified five key study areas that are really derived by community input and our understanding of the corridor, and where potential, you know, improvements could happen that are seemingly lower-hanging fruit than, you know, than certain others. So I'm just going to list these off. The first one is Anson Street to Lynn Creek, kind of on the very south end of the corridor study area. The second is the East Madison Street to Lynn Street, this is what we refer to as the viaduct area, just on the north side of the viaduct. The third being Lynn Street to State Street, which is essentially the downtown core. Bromley Street to Riverside Street, this is kind of our north residential transition area, this is where all the primary residential exists along the corridor. And then the fifth one is Marion Street north to the river. So I'm just going to walk through kind of how this document was set up, so you have a better understanding of what all this information is. It's, this is complex, there's a lot of information here, a lot of recommendations, but this is meant to provide an incremental framework for making improvements both within the right-of-way and outside of the right-of-way, as you begin to, you know, realize the vision for the Highway 14 corridor. So there's a matrix that follows this, but essentially it consists of six primary steps. The first, to build a framework, develop potential rezoning or updates to your zoning code and potential design guidelines and things of the like, to guide land use planning and redevelopment within this area. The second is recruiting and communication, kind of begin discussing the potential with developers, investors, and property owners, so there's recommendations for how to go about starting that conversation. The third is to incentivize, create incentives if possible, this is both monetary as well as organizational incentives. Build support and partnerships, that's, you know, a key component of this, is to build support, and so there's recommendations in here about what certain things the city might do to build the support for certain projects. The fifth one is to research and reinvest. You know, you're going to learn things, learn what's working, what's not working, there's recommendations for, you know, how to adapt the process, and look at reinvesting in the potential projects. And then, you know, ultimately, as projects happen and scenarios are executed, you're going to revise this framework, and you're going to make adjustments based on what's working and what's proven most valuable. So to just to summarize how this matrix was set up and how it should be used, we start by identifying the recommendation, you know, what is it? We identify what type of recommendation is. Is it a zoning code improvement? Is it a program? Is it a funding mechanism? What scale is it? Is it a city scale, district scale, site scale? Who's responsible? Who's the organizing entity? Like where should this, where should this recommendation start? Who should own it? And then ultimately, you know, why is it important? What's the implication? And what's the goal? Moving this along, you know, we prioritize these, so we kind of give a high, medium, and low priority. And then ultimately, we identify kind of who benefits. Is it the community? Is it the economy? Is it art? Is it the environment? These are all kind of four ways of identifying kind of, you know, who's benefiting from this. So for each one of those kind of six components of this framework, we've identified a list of recommendations. So this is going to take some time to understand and to go through, but, you know, we've provided several scenarios within here, within each one of these study areas, where we indicate or we conceptualize, if these things were put in place, and if these recommendations were put into practice, how does that change the site? How does that change the location? So I'm just going to walk through one scenario, and this is one that's seemingly gained a lot of traction through our planning process, and has created a lot of conversations with community members, and this is the area, which is on the north side of the viaduct. You have, these items identified in red here are either vacant or unoccupied parcels or owned by the city. There's approximately like seven to 10 acres of land here that is sitting vacant. We looked at kind of what a potential phased approach could be to taking this location and revitalizing it, and looking at redevelopment potential for it. This is, you know, as you come across the viaduct, this is kind of your entering downtown. There's a key location here for potential gateway opportunity. We look at abandoning the existing ramps to Madison and the viaduct, and look at actually taking Nevada Street and making it a pass-through street and connecting it. The first phase could be just creating an open green space. The second phase could be creating some dedicated parking that could be, could facilitate future buildings or neighboring properties. Third phase, again, you know, this could be three years, this could be 10 years down the road, but we look at, you know, some infill of mixed-use development, some medium-to-higher density affordable housing, commercial retail, there's a lot of possibilities for this area. And, you know, the kind of the side benefits of this, you start looking at dedicating parking for some of the established businesses here, you look at possible some access management and some sharing of parking areas to reduce curb cuts. That's a huge component of this, of the issues that are out here along the corridor today, is access management and the number of curb cuts and where people are turning. There's considerable amount of conflicts along the corridor. Here's a conceptual rendering of, you know, what this particular scenario, you know, could look like. You have the potential for some kind of two-to-three, maybe four-story mixed-use development immediately off the viaduct, you look at potentially repurposing some of the historic buildings here, you got some gateway, some public art, some sculpture here to kind of liven up the pedestrian space, but, you know, it's a certain potential here, and as we look at where the low-hanging fruit is, you know, we start to identify, you know, where the vacant properties are, and, you know, that's why we've identified this one as a potential spot. So ultimately, you know, it's, the city will need to make a decision on kind of where to start. We've identified a few steps in starting the process of implementing change here, and particularly by making some decisions as it relates to the DOT's project, and what the priorities are along the corridor, and what potential right-of-way improvements need to happen to coincide with the DOT project. A couple items to understand is, as I've already mentioned, they're going to be letting that project this fall. We've had conversations with the DOT in several meetings about potentially delaying the resurfacing of the portion that we're talking about today, and that's from Anson Street north. The funding that DOT has allocated for the resurfacing improvements would not go away, they would table that for potentially a year or two, to be put back in at a later date. But ultimately, they want to work with the city, they understand that there's a need for safety improvements. We've brought to light several things for them to consider that are well beyond just resurfacing the road. But ultimately, the city will need to evaluate your priorities, set a budget for what the city's involvement is for Phase 1, conduct a traffic study of the corridor, as well as look at an access management study along the corridor, and then review the DOT's financial investment potential. There's, based on different scenarios, there's different degrees of funding that could be available from the DOT, specifically in the conversation of resurfacing or complete reconstruction. And then ultimately, evaluate the public infrastructure conditions. There's certain locations where there's sanitary sewer, storm sewer improvements that could be timely, may make sense to do now rather than wait, considering if the road's going to be tore up, so. I'm going to, I'm going to end it there. That's a very quick overview of this, 130 pages of information, so I expect there's some questions. I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions?
Yeah, out of all that talking you just did, what I'm looking at is delaying the overlay or whatever they're going to do to this corridor, and supposedly the city approved this delay, potentially. So you're going to delay it for two or three years, but you're talking about a 10-year plan. So how do you, how do you implement a 10-year plan to fit into that two-to-three-year delay? To me, the most important part is getting the corridor, both of them, resurfaced.
So there's certain improvements, such as widening sidewalks and creating more separation between pedestrians and the vehicles, that are just simply not possible to do without kind of going above and beyond the resurfacing of the road, and this is specifically in the area that the community identified as kind of the number-one place to start with improvements, and this is that area kind of from State Street north to essentially Marion, where we have that narrow right-of-way. So in our conversations with the DOT, it has been, you know, if you let this project in the fall, they're going to come in, resurface the road, and they're not going to change curb lines, they're not going to reduce the width of the roadway, and it's essentially, you know, it's going to be an improvement, it's going to be a resurfaced roadway, but it's, you know, short of tearing up that freshly resurfaced road, and/or coming in and... resurfaced road and/or coming in and making additional improvements at a later date, which will create additional disturbance. The conversation was, we could potentially delay it if the city wants to consider additional improvements that go beyond that resurfacing and do it at a later date. The condition of the roadway probably isn't going to change dramatically in two years, but it'll allow the city to study this a little more, study the traffic signals and the timing, as well as attorney movements at key intersections, and make some more informed decisions. And the fear was that if the DOT resurfaced the roadway, it kind of closes the door, if you will, on other improvements to the roadway, because nobody's really going to want to come in and tear up that newly paved surface. So some of these improvements are more immediate as they tie in closer to what the DOT is proposing. Some of them are longer-term. There's kind of some immediate, short-term, near-term improvements here, and there's certainly improvements in here that are, you know, 20, 40 years down the road, but they're items to consider now as the city starts, you know, to look at land use planning and other improvements.
I think to follow up on that specifically, in those priority projects, there are a number outside funding sources that have been identified, which are grants and other things that we would certainly need time to pursue and potentially be awarded, you know, before the DOT would be able to do that project if we wanted those things to happen at the same time. The other thing, you know, we're, I guess it's almost June, so that means it's just about budget time again, where we look at our capital improvement plan, and so that's where I think there's a conversation about some of those items. Are there some of those things that we could start fitting in there into our capital improvement plan, looking at some of the identified sources that we've said we would have locally such as road use tax fund dollars? What is our street improvement plan, you know, for some of the future years as you talk about Riverside being something that we would need to be repaved as it was reconfigured? And so that would really be where those things start to hit those planning processes that we have internally so that we can start to incorporate changes, so it's not like you have to do this big, you know, drop everything right now, how do we get this done? That we have planning processes in place where this would start to fit in.
Other questions or comments? Well, thanks, Casey. I'd like to compliment you and your company on the good job at the public hearings where we got to ask any questions we wanted to and make any suggestions that we had.
We do have two motions that we're requesting.
Oh, okay.
So the first motion that we're requesting is a procedural one to accept the Highway 14 corridor study.
So moved.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I would be in favor of accepting their work without the provision that there's nothing in here that we're approving to be done, correct?
Correct.
Right. Roll call.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Carrie?
And then the second motion that we are requesting relates to what Casey just talked about, which is a motion to ask the DOT to reschedule the maintenance project for the Highway 14 corridor from Anson Street to the Iowa River Bridge. I will make one comment, and I think Michelle, Casey, or Justin can confirm, they did identify or we identified one area within that corridor which really would need some immediate addressing in 2019 with their project. Was more towards the Iowa River Bridge? Is that correct?
Yeah, I believe it was the area from Woodland Street North. That was identified as it's in bad shape now and probably needs to be repaired first. And it's really not affected by the other improvements that are itself over there.
So, that's what we're looking for in terms of a motion, knowing that they have identified, we have identified what that worst portion is in terms of pavement condition and that that could be included, would be included in the rest of the work to happen on Highway 14 south of Anson Street in 2019.
I move.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Your Honor, if I can just for a moment, I do think that as we look at this, we have to have a better plan rather than just going by what the DOT's timeframe. I am very pleased that they were willing to work with us on the timeframe, but this is an opportunity for us to improve this north side of the city especially, and I think we ought to take advantage of it and have it well-planned out from our part of what we can do and what we can put forward with funds to make this an action that really improves our city.
Well put. Any other comments? Call the roll, please.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Carrie, thank you. And the final item is a discussion of funding for the Fourth of July fireworks. Anybody want to take that one on?
I would make one statement towards it, that we need, if we could have someone contact Luisa Ortega, I believe, who is the chairman of her one-person committee, and find out if she is actively pursuing fireworks this year, because I think last year we came up short of money and there was a lot of confusion and problems, and I'm not sure how active she's been, and I would hate to commit money to a fund that would be in trouble. I'm all in favor of doing it. I think it's a very good item to work on for a community, but if we're the only one contributing, then I think we'd be in trouble.
Let's just take that as a suggestion that staff follow through with her. Any other comments? We are at item K as a matter of public comment. To shorten it, please keep it to three minutes and let others be able to speak as well. Any public comment?
Can I ask one question at this time?
You bet.
Your Honor? As Mr. Gowdy said, can you please share the Aquatic Center opening dates and how that is working, what their schedule is for this early part of the summer that we seem to have jumped into headfirst?
I was going to say, Anselnus is out sick today. The Aquatic Center did open yesterday, and so I was just still looking to see if the hours are posted on our website, but if not, I can certainly have her email those out to you.
I know from having been on the Park and Rec Board before I got on the council that typically that date is set way ahead of time.
It's contractually set in our operations agreement with the YMCA.
The woman I sleep with had the same question, it's hot out, why don't we have kids in the pool?
Well, that was the question you were getting many calls on.
Ican Report opens Monday, May 28th, and then June 2nd and 3rd, then June 6th through August 19th. So, we are closed this week, but then we'll be open on the weekend. It does not list hours.
That's fine. The dates are helpful, thank you.
It coincides with school.
School letting out.
Yep.
Thank you.
Hello there, everybody. Lonnie Hoglan, 909 Stegman. I see your rules up here, it says for me to speak for three minutes and to address you guys. There you go. I really appreciate your work. You're doing all you can do, I appreciate that. I sent you guys, I believe every one of you, a little packet in the mail that, I want to use the word as a complaint, but not a mean nasty complaint. It was just something I noticed in my travels. I deal in junk cars. I noticed that one intersection is a residential neighborhood, four junk vehicles in one area. You're talking about Third Avenue and all this curb appeal. I'm not sure where you're at on the front yard parking or the new code enforcement officer that's on staff, but I think it's something you need to really work on, curb appeal. Give the police department the ability somehow to enforce a law that's going to work. I'm not talking about junk cars, I'm talking about junk cars and trash and junk. Do something that'll work. I guess the word I heard Al Hoop say in some of his comments today, frustrated. I'm frustrated that I talk to people and they say, "It looks nasty." I'm frustrated that you guys can't talk to me right now. I don't know how I bring this up, who I bring this up to, what can I do to get rid of this trashy part of Marshalltown? We've got really nice area, where our middle-income area is going away, and I don't know that it's just the low income that's causing this nasty part, but with that said, someone give me some feedback later. That's what I've got. Thank you.
Happy to. For one, our code enforcement officer is kind of buried. We didn't have one for two years, so he's trying to play catch-up, but he's been very responsive to the complaints that I know that we've made. My wife and I have him on speed dial, and I'll bet we outnumber everybody else that makes complaints about things. I have suggested that he condense the main code items, you know, what the height can be of the weeds, where you can park your car, can't park your car, and I'll try to condense it onto a business card that we could then get to all the police officers and anybody that walks into the police station or City Hall here so that people can know that and report it. And then I did have a dialogue with Joe, who's our new code enforcement officer, about the fact that 20 years ago, we had over 20 people who were volunteers, and that required a lot more work than it does anymore. You had to go to the courthouse to look up the Sidwell number, you had to come here to this building and pick up the camera, take it out, take pictures, return it with that information. It's now a lot easier to do the reporting and prosecution, so I still like that idea. I thought it worked pretty well 20 years ago, and I think we could scare up people like you that really care about the way the city looks and make them available, maybe even like an advisory committee, kind of like Park and Rec has an advisory committee to help the code enforcement officer.
I don't want it to be a conflict of interest, because I buy junk cars. There's Action Auto Parts. Hey, everybody, sell your car to Action Auto Parts. They're my competition. But clean the town up, and it's the garbage. How do you guys let a trailer sit there with garbage bags in it and raccoons eating out of the garbage? Get a code that's enforceable and make them clean it up. I can't afford it, well then make them figure it out somehow. You can't let the garbage sit there. I went to Orlando, Florida for a touring convention, and I was just disheartened when I come back to town. It's like, this is where I live. I'm sorry. That's past your three-minute rant.
Oh, thank you. Appreciate it. And thanks for the packet.
I think we forwarded your letter to the Newtons office.
It was, and that's where Michelle Spahnheimer is who you need to talk to for updates about that.
Yeah, he got it.
And Michelle Spahnheimer is who you should talk to for any of your complaints as well. She is the supervisor, the code enforcement inspector.
It's bad that this is the wrong forum to do this, but of those four vehicles, two of them are gone, because I've made a complaint. So they're gone, they're nasty, they're done, they're out of there, so there's half of it.
Thanks. Any other members of the public wish to comment? Justin?
Sorry I asked.
To respond to Counselor Lamer, we are working on a schedule for spraying of mosquitoes. It takes an overnight action, which means they're not working in the normal working hours, which takes action through the union, so we're working on it in the next few weeks, hopefully.
And I know there are people with allergies that need notice before the spraying happens so they can protect themselves.
You build a nice deck so you can go outside, and you go outside, and you sit there swatting them, so then you cover yourself with deet and then you go in.
So you went there, so I'm going to go there.
Then you have to go in the house, take a shot.
I'm going to repeat what I heard from the Public Works Director in West Des Moines. Don't expect that it's going to affect anything in your backyard. When we spray along the center line of the street, it's meant to work from the street to the front of your house. It does not impact the mosquito population. That'd be on you as a private property owner.
Can't make them make the circle drive?
No, I cannot.
Thanks, Justin.
Thanks.
I will declare the meeting adjourned to 2:24 PM. Thanks for coming.